I think that's what it was last week too. If I remember right, when I looked at it. Marshall County was up to a couple of the previous one when I looked at it. Generally look at who's they're voting for on the review. Unfortunately, we last week had one more death in the county, but who knows where to place Robert's County. So I can't get this.
It's six thirty. Let's begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Call, please.
Brittany Apple, here Joseph Just.
Here.
Paul Stapleton.
Here.
Lee Silverberg.
Here.
Herman Wigleitner.
Here.
Delray German.
President.
We have a forum. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda? The agenda was posted. It was in your packets. Is there a motion to adopt? By just is there a second? Apple, discussion. All in favor of the motion, aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We had minutes for our regular meeting on April 12th and the special meeting that we conducted on the April 15th. Are there questions, additions, corrections to either of those sets of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Also, who?
Motion by Stapleton, seconded by Wigleitner. Discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the bills to pay for the month of April. Are any questions on any of the bills? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Apple, seconded by Just. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That's the last item for our old council before we look at convening as a new council, but we have an unfinished piece of business that we'd like to accomplish at this time. And I would like to have Herman Wigleitner come forward so we can recognize him for forty-two years of service to the city of Siseton. Herman has spent the majority of his working career in service to our community as a councilman. And I think that's quite remarkable. So we'd like to recognize him at this time with this plaque.
On three, ready, one, two, three. One more. One, two.
Got it?
I think so.
Let's get Herman around. Herman?
Let's.
Get you your name tag here and you can put it on your wall at home there. And Connie, take your place. Our next order of business is a new council. So you got anything you want to say at all before you part?
I want to thank everybody, the community, the council. We are great people, good to work with. There ain't much more to say.
Thanks Herman.
Thank you Herman. Did he sign the bills? No.
Okay. Herman, you need to sign the bills before you leave, so. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the old council then. Motion by Apple, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Silverberg, discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Connie, if you could come forward, take your place here, you'll be a member of the new council. And the first order of business is for our city attorney to administer the oaths of office for all the councilmen that were re-elected, our new councilman, and the mayor, I guess.
Stand up.
So everybody's.
Raise your right hand.
We need to don't raise them.
Repeat up for me. Where there's a blank, please state your name. I.
I, Terry Jasper.
Having been elected to the city council.
Having been elected to the city council.
Within and for the city of Siseton.
Within and for the city of Siseton.
In the county of Roberts.
In the county of Roberts.
And state of South Dakota.
State of South Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of South Dakota.
Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of said city of Siseton.
And the ordinances of said city of Siseton.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of my said position.
Perform all the duties of my said position.
Of the city council as provided by law.
Of the city council as provided by law.
Okay, if you would sign.
Okay, thank you Erin, welcome Connie.
Thank you.
Okay, the first item of business as a new council is to elect officers among the council. We'll be electing a council president and a council vice president. President will act on behalf of the mayor in his absence. Vice president obviously will act if the president and the mayor aren't available. So we need to elect those two positions. Are there nominations for council president?
I'll nominate Paul Stapleton.
Just nominated Paul Stapleton.
I'll second.
Second to that nomination. Are there any other nominations for council president? Are there any other nominations for council president? Are there any other nominations for council president? If not, I'll entertain a motion, the nomination ceases. The unanimous ballot be cast for Paul Stapleton as council president. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by Silverberg, is there a second?
Second.
Just. Discussion? Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Paul, congratulations. Council vice president, are there nominations?
I'll nominate Delray German as vice president.
Paul nominates Delray. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second of my silver. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll entertain a motion, nomination ceases. We cast unanimous ballot for Delray German as council vice president. Is there a motion to that effect? By Just, is there a second?
Also.
Apple, discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Delray. Thank you both for serving in that capacity. Okay, we'll go on to the reports then. Alan Lekness, liquor store report.
I don't have anything to bring in. We had a good month. I don't feel like having the application quite at this time for hiring. Is that so?
Okay, questions for Ellen? There's some overtime being put in because of the, what are you thinking about the hours and that type of thing that were open? Any thought, consider yourself or the police or the liquor store committee regarding hours at all? Any thought put into that at all?
I thought I have one that would like to go full-time, but I didn't know if anybody would accept another full-time position. Eric has said that he would take it if it was up to grabs. He is on, he will be out his six-month. I think it's the fifteenth, I mean, or the seventeenth or something.
Okay. So that's maybe a topic of discussion for our June meeting. Perhaps you and the liquor store committee can get together and kind of discuss that and maybe make a recommendation to the council at the June meeting.
Okay.
Good.
Ellen? Mr. Mayor, are you still going to advertise?
We have that.
Hard time doing.
Just not getting any applications in.
I thought last month you might have had one. You were saying.
We hired Dustin.
Okay, that was the only one that happened. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Ellen? Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
Police chief Jim Cryman.
Good evening. I don't have anything. I think everything I have is going to come later in the meeting.
Okay.
Unless anybody has any questions on the stats.
I see we're down some on total stats versus March.
A little bit slower than I thought.
Questions for Jim?
How are the vehicles coming?
What?
The vehicles, like you guys were.
I know Jeremy's got the whole west side done. He's got half of the east side done. We had one vehicle that I talked to you about that we got returned mail on. So just wait two weeks and.
Yes. Then I had a person call me, Buckland?
Okay.
They'd moved the inoperable ones. The other two that were tagged, they say are operable. And I said, they have to be moved regularly and they have to be licensed and tagged. And so if they're not, then they're in violation of what they said to me.
Right.
They said they're both operable. And I said, I recognize that, but you typically only use one of them once a year. So it needs to be moved regularly.
Right.
And so they're supposed to follow that.
Okay.
And they can't be parked up in their ass to, right? On the yard?
I don't know where those ones are parked.
They can be parked in the yard. They can be parked in the yard? Thought we had ordinance about parking in the yard?
No.
I've never read that one.
If we had ordinance about parking in the yard, we'd have to go back around because there's many people found parking there.
I thought there was an ordinance about parking on a gravel pad or some kind of pad.
I think there is when it comes to like recreational vehicles. I don't know that there is just for a car, you know, that type of vehicle, I don't think. But there is on recreational vehicles.
The recreational vehicles talk about the gravel pad and it has to be so big type thing, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Okay, thank you. Street and safety, Myron Dow.
Good evening. So we, we got a lot of banners up there. I'm pretty good. Oh, it's don't have a whole lot of crack soda. We're waiting on them to call. And we're first in line, so hopefully we don't have that by next week or knock on. Need them. Um, he told me that the weight parts for crack soda we rent, so. We're supposed to have that actually today with parts when they come in. So it's open by golf by Wednesday, but we'll, we'll. Our old garbage truck, we had to take down some of those, those two balls that had one of them boom from the back that actually broke on the hinge itself. We pressed it out. Um, so we had to take it out, sanitation products. We got that back already, so that truck is getting to the point where we have to start. You know, we don't use it very much, but it's starting to become one of our problems too. Um, and I know we talked about getting a different garbage truck, so we're just, you know, keeping it. It's keeping in good shape. We've just got to maybe get along a little more here. Um, or we do get something different. Um, tend to go to the truck, does have to do with a little service, but, um, that one shouldn't be buying. That one's going to be under warranty still, so we just had that one done too.
Do you know if the garbage bodies are interchangeable between our new truck and our old truck?
They do, but we run so much tonnage through. Um, that's why usually when we do trade them off, we do the whole thing. We get new bodies because of, by the better reason or else besides, we're all tonnage we run through.
Because it seems like our track record has been better with the truck chassis part of the old unit versus the new unit.
Yeah. Um, and then usually we take the truck, the old truck, we put a dump truck body on it. But we wouldn't be able to do that with this one because this truck is, we, young, we don't want it to hurt shop.
Okay.
That would be better just to trade it, so. Um, everything else is going good. I did have one guy give me his two-week notice. That'd be Michael Schneider, he did that in, um, right. So we're learning how we can get a little summer help. We're not going to advertise for a full-time person.
So your original plan, you know, if you had full staff, I think was not to advertise for summer help, but not knowing who we might get, you know, you and I had talked ahead of time before the meeting. I think probably it'd be prudent for us to advertise for both and see what we ended up getting. And if we got some summer help that we can get by until potentially we can hire somebody full-time or if we get somebody full-time that we feel we can hire. It would depend upon whether or not we'd hire part-time help. So the important thing is, is to get an ad out there and we've got a position available and we've got the consensus. This, this just happened prior to the time that the agenda, or not, after the agendas were actually posted.
Yeah, it was prior.
So, but I guess if it'd be the consensus of the council for us to advertise for the position, we'll, we'll advertise and conduct some interviews and potentially look at hiring at our next meeting or before if we can hold a special meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Your summer help, you're looking for two people?
We're just, we would just need one.
Sure enough?
Yeah.
Not a grass cutter and everything at all?
It's easier to keep eye on one of them than two, so. It's easier to watch one of them. Probably I can have one of my full-time guys to keep eye and stuff that way. Especially if it's a bottle or something like that, I can have somebody that knows what to do. You know, versus having two kids up there turning off. Also, just a little safe to keep eye on one. But I don't have, you know, unless you guys have anything.
Well, you know, we did wrap up the citywide cleanup.
Yes.
On the twenty-eights.
We ended up, ended up forgetting, picking up one, uh, one resident. We forgot some there. Uh, but they were, people were still trying to put it out. I mean, we got bags of leaves up here. I want to say it's four, it's up in the school. They got, they put them on way later than after pickup, so we didn't pick them up. So they're still sitting there, but otherwise we got most of everything all picked up.
I think this would be a good time also to recognize Elder Woman Apple for the efforts that she put together in organizing, you know, the litter pickup that day. We had a tremendous turnout of people. It was well organized, you know, you were coordinated with you. We had, you know, the dumpsters strategically located. I, I think it's probably something we're going to continue to do on an annual event and that's what it takes is, you know, somebody organizing it and taking the initiative. So I think we owe Elder Woman Apple and her husband a round of applause for organizing that in our community. Would you like to make any comments at all?
Thank you. Um, no, I, I think it was pretty smooth. I think the weather kind of took a little bit of a turn on us, but.
Blue windy.
Yeah. It was nice in the morning, but then all of a sudden it got pretty windy. So, yeah, it is something I think that, you know, we should make it an annual event.
And it was a good opportunity for the public to interact with law enforcement, you know, all different types of law enforcement and, you know, our police officers had a chance, kind of had a leadership role in it and kind of leading some of the different groups to the different parts of town. So I think that was a good opportunity too.
We do get the guy coming down tomorrow for looking at our, making a veterans team.
Could you talk about that, the striping that we're going to look at doing? Talk about that in more detail? And I guess we could take that up as an agenda item here too. I think it's on, on our agenda here, isn't it?
Yes.
We can act on that now too. Maybe you can talk about that.
So the estimates we've got of just our veterans, all the down veterans, handicap, the curbs, and then offshoots veterans there. But now he gets here and then look at from the city hall and also the liquor store parking lot during that particular. So he's going to give us a little, he'll give us another estimate on that part. He does have maps, he'll take a drone up of Tom or Eddie, they'll bring him to the hall and go over. Uh, but right now, the one we got is for veterans. Price is on there. And he'll tell us what we're going to be looking at for the extra stuff here. Otherwise, yeah, he can come tomorrow. He does two parking lots. It's, uh, he does it in the silver actually. But he's been doing their parking lots since he, they have two of them separate.
So are you saying that typically it's done twice a year? But, you know, we're just going to be looking at doing it. Hopefully it'll last for one year.
Yeah, he, well, he's a normal, or normally he's made twice a year due to winters, ice sweeping and stuff like that. He, we've been doing it twice a year, but we'd be just looking, we have to touch up, we'll touch up ourselves. And we'll just keep on top of the, I'm pretty sure it's a case that we'll, he does have handicap, actual stencils that you can put on your own, so.
Are there any questions for Myron on the, on the estimate or the proposal?
So like you said, this, this veterans, it's not like a half-block in on a few or just.
Veterans, well, veterans, you know, come out and look each street.
Just a little bit around the radius there?
No, well, we usually, what I would usually do is we'd go down all the way down the, just a half-block to the alleys.
Yeah, I was wondering a little bit today.
What we don't have, anything down here, the parking lot of the liquor store. And we're talking about probably those parking spots all here.
Yeah, I was just wondering on veterans, it was a half on each side, if you do.
And that's what we're going to, when he comes in tomorrow, we're talking about it because he wanted to know about our sweeping, because he wasn't sure. He had to do that, but we have sweepers, we do all the sweeping, so maybe I changed that as a little bit of a difference.
So Myron, I think the proposal only includes Veterans Avenue, right?
Veterans Avenue.
It will be quite a bit more if we're looking at going a half-block each direction off of veterans. So just so you are aware of that, that is just veterans.
Half a block.
Yeah, so normally we use the whole half-block off, that way the alleys. And that's what I mentioned to him about he done the sweeping, though, on top of that today, I talked to him. And he said, well, I could change it because that's going to take less labor time for him if we do all our own sweeping. You know, so usually when he comes, he has to sweep it. So if he has less time, he's like, he might build a more bed in there still for what we got. And he'd let us know tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
I guess is the council comfortable with the motion to proceed with the striping on Veterans Avenue, half-block and here? Knowing that the bill is going to be higher than just this estimate and then just approving it as part of our bills in June? I guess that's what the motion is more than likely going to be for, so. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll second it.
Motion by Just, seconded by Stapleton. Is there discussion? So the motion is to proceed with striping Veterans Avenue, half-block off the alleys and in front of city hall. Got a motion in the second, any further discussion?
I think he wanted, didn't you want to include the liquor store too?
Yes, yes.
And the liquor store would be included in that then. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I just have one more quick thing. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think last fall we talked about some of the weeds, the complaints you're getting about the weeds that were coming up between the pavement and the curb. And you had said that the, last year we decided against spraying. We are going to be spraying this year, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we're already started on, I think, with the baby on the street, you know.
Okay.
As well as the propensity, we're already going to spray.
But on, you're looking at the curbs and that type of thing. You're going to be looking at round up there, aren't you?
Yeah, we're going to do that. If we do that, we'll move it forward versus we'll be just going on the curb with the hand sprayer. I think we were talking more. It was right down with the pool where we had all that growing in there and that hill was pretty bad. So that's what we were talking, spraying, hand spraying, so.
Gets bad by the nursing home too?
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions for Myron? Got any safety training coming up at all, the guys?
We do get some videos watched, especially if you do get a new person, one of the white videos. Just changing seasons, usually we change our videos. Um, so we need to, I need to get touch with some folks and have them help us up some videos for the changing season here on Ray Day, get some video watching. So that's on, on plan to get that up here. We haven't had a chance to use the new truck, so we asked me about that. We have used it. I, what did, a couple of, one, we don't got plates switched over. Um, and I was not sure if we're, separating for using it yet. We were using our truck, so. So, otherwise, I think Paul talked to me about coming down and checking it out. So we'll come down and look at it. I'm not sure where you're going to know, get, so get it checked over and hopefully get that out of the mess.
Any else from Myron? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, water and sewer, Gary Spencer.
Evening everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have nothing new coming up for the council tonight. Everything is, running smooth so far, nothing out of the ordinary.
We've done all the flushing then, for now?
Yep, I just got all the flushing done. Some dirty water out there, everything should be better now. We can get our treatment plant built, that'll help quite a bit. We're going to go back to flushing two times a year instead of once a year now, I think that'll help.
I noticed the elevated storage is a perch for some, our feathery friends.
Yeah, they like it up there. Sees their prey.
How long has that been happening? I've been noticing it as, as it been.
Oh, it's been a couple, three years. They're up there all the time. They spend a lot of time in the pine trees over there on Steve Gray's property too. They most like the nights, they can sit up high, hather. They're up there, I don't know of any way of getting rid of them. They're up there, I don't know, any way of getting rid of them. Probably got to be a mess up there. A lot of cleaning before they could paint.
When they come to paint, you ever hear? When they come into paint, you ever hear?
Uh, I haven't heard anything yet. We're hoping that, um, last I talked to Lee, he thought it probably wouldn't start till July. Which would work really well because right now we, uh, I- nine, I- twenty-nine construction is going to be getting water for us for their cement plant. And they thought they would be done by Fourth of July with all the cement work. Because I told them that if we're painting water tower, we got one or the other down and empty, that I won't be able to supply them with water. It's just not enough water for the city and them. So I'm hoping that, uh, after the Fourth, we start, start, uh, painting right there. I haven't heard anything from Lee. We're supposed to have a pre-construction meeting yet with wire iron, but I haven't heard anything about that yet either.
Okay, anything else for Gary then? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Building permits, read your packet, we have three this month. Um, twenty-twenty-one-ten is John Donnell. That's a concrete pad coming out of the house. I think it's going to be used, uh, you know, as a patio area. Comes out of patio doors on the west side of the house, two-seventeen West Walnut. Dale Carlson is a eight-by-twelve lawn storage shed at his home at Four Summit Street. And then Trevor Mishler is putting up a privacy fence between the property that he is in the process of purchasing, uh, on the east side of his, bordering east side of the property and the neighbor to the east. The zoning board took a look at all three cases and all three applications and recommends approval. Any questions? Is there a motion then to approve building permits twenty-twenty-one-dash-ten through twenty-twenty-one-dash-twelve? Motion by Solberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by German. Discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed motion carries. Finance report for April is in your meeting packets. Any questions about the finance report? Any comments from the finance officer regarding the finance report?
I have no comments unless anyone asks questions.
Is there a motion to approve? Also move. Motion by Stapleton, is there a second? Apple, discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed motion carries. Our city attorney, Erin Cameron, you have comments?
Yes, um, last week Terry, Amber and I participated in a Zoom conference with First District to address, uh, the medical marijuana issues that will be arising for municipalities throughout the state of South Dakota as of July one because, uh, while the recreational is at the Supreme Court at this point, the medical marijuana is not. It, it will become legal on July first, except the state departments that are supposed to propagate rules with regard to the medical marijuana have not done that and will not have those done until October first is the date that we have. So what we're dealing with is a lapse between July first and October first for potential zoning issues. Uh, for municipalities, the big thing is the dispensaries. There wouldn't be a growing, uh, area necessarily or a cultivation area, but a dispensary. And if we don't do anything, these dispensaries can go up throughout town regardless of what our zoning plant is currently and will be after the state promulgates rules with regard to the medical marijuana. So what First District has done is, um, they went ahead and started working with a couple attorneys who are with ourselves, put in insurance alliance, um, and basically have come up with a draft form of a stopgap, emergency temporary ordinance that we would pass that basically states, hey, we recognize that medical marijuana is legal. However, we have to operate it in accordance with the rules promulgated by the state of South Dakota. And they have not been released yet. And so basically you can apply for a dispensary permit, but it will be denied until those rules are in effect and can be followed. With those rules, there will be some zoning issues that the cities are going to have to address as to where we may want these types of businesses and where we don't want them. Um, but it's recommended we pass this. We are not in a position where we can tell you that we won't be sued for the denial, um, of issuing a permit because the, it's legal as of July one. What they did tell us is that the state insurance alliance will support whatever municipality may get sued. Um, in the event they do, and work with us on that. And ultimately what likely will happen is the lawsuit will essentially terminate once the rule's going to effect because then there would be application of the rules and people could apply again and get permits. Um, I recommend that we do this because if we don't, what will happen is we can't control the number where they sit or anything like that. And you might end up with a medical marijuana dispensary next to a school, next to, um, another place that might not be the best place for marijuana to be sold. Every municipality in the state is dealing with this. It's not just South Dakota. That's why First District has stepped in and is helping with it. Um, and all we can do is hope that the state gets the rules and regulations issued as soon as possible. So what Amber and I have been doing, and Mayor D'Asper's too, is reviewing this stuff. And Amber and I have been working on a timeframe, and we may have to have a special meeting. Um, but ultimately we're going to have to convene as the zoning board, have them come to a meeting and meet and agree. And then the council would then meet on it, at that same meeting, pass it, and then we could have a second reading. It's got to be published and then it's another a day's after.
I think we can have a second reading five days after.
Five days, that's what I thought. And so it's one, since it's an emergency ordinance that would become effective upon reading, it wouldn't need publication. Um, but we need to do it to be in effect to that, prior to that July one date. So this is going to be coming out, and you guys are likely going to be expected to come to another meeting. But, uh, it puts us in the best position we can be put in based upon the enaction by the state to promulgate the rules, which of course is kind of affected by the pandemic because they were busy with that. So, and there's a lot of stuff that went on there, but, um.
Every municipality by statute has to allow at least one dispensary for medical marijuana. So every municipality in the state of South Dakota has to deal with this. And, you know, it's a timeframe that it has to get done by July one. And, uh, the only solution is to put this temporary ordinance is in place because I don't think the state is going to have the rules in place until October first. So not only are we going to deal with this as a temporary ordinance, we're also going to be dealing it with again, once the state gets their rules in effect and we'll have to enact an ordinance, you know, in, in compliance with what the rules are. So we're going to be dealing with this as other communities are. And then we'll potentially be dealing with recreational marijuana too, depending upon what the Supreme Court decides on that, so.
And all we can hope honestly on this, on that at this point is that for some reason they don't make the decision until after, that after the state's done the medical portion. Because otherwise I foresee stuff getting kicked down the road even further. Um, I did talk with our contact at First District, Luke, after our meeting. And he indicated that, because I asked him, you know, we're in this position because the state didn't get the rules written and adopted. So there's a potential for any city who would potentially get sued over the denial of the dispensaries under this temporary ordinance to interplete the state on something like this because it's not our fault the rules and regulations weren't in place. So ultimately if we do that, that's what our, our attorneys with the insurance line likely would be doing is saying, hey, thank you, we recognize we did this, but the state's ultimately responsible to try and pass, pass the buck on there where it should be. We'll just have to wait and see, we don't know if it will happen here. The alternative is to wait and hope nobody applies for one until October. But then, like I said, you, you could have more than one and you could have it where you don't want it. Part of what they'll be looking at, and we'll address some zoning stuff later, is zoning for it that's going to have to be changed within our city. So there's a lot of pieces that are going to come together with this that we're just, we're not in a place to address it.
Questions for Erin regarding the topic? Lot more to come. Okay, we set aside time in each of our city council meetings for a public comment. Now is that time, is there a public comment? Doctor Stott?
Yeah, there's going to be a cool association who would like to take a few comments, and then we'll have more information under stickers as the meeting are by. I'll have, do see, um, give a, open up things, you know, to, to deal with.
Go ahead.
I want to sit up here. Um, we're trying to be.
Yeah, speak as loud as you can so we can all hear you. Sorry to take your mask off.
Okay, we are trying to kind of make a plan for the pool, um, to go forward with at least opening for swimming lessons. Tiffany has made, um, some kind of rough drafts for lessons, the adult swim, that kind of thing.
There are similar waivers to what the school would use for COVID or communicable diseases. Um, wavering that the pool would not be liable for those such things. And they are, what every parent has to sign in order for your child to participate in any extracurricular activity within the school or any other school district for that matter. So, um, even in the state functions, they have to sign up on an additional waiver for those two. So very similar to that.
We are hoping to open, um, starting after the Fourth of July, run like a six-week session, um, having swimming lessons and adult swim. We also would like to ask the city to consider its annual support for the swimming pool. We've been, um, collecting, um, signatures from the community members. We're at about a hundred and twenty-six right now. We've been doing it for the last week and we were hoping to, you know, have more information maybe at the next council meeting, but if you could discuss, you know, possibly, you know, supporting the, the pool for this summer, that would be great. We're looking into some other options as well. But we feel like it's really important for our community to, um, provide swimming lessons or at least, you know, maybe outsource them or, you know, whatever. It's not fair for our kids, like Tiffany was saying earlier, it's not fair for our kids to suffer and to go without swimming lessons. You know, we've had drownings in our area, different things. And I strongly feel like it's important for our kids to teach, you know, learn how to swim. We were hoping to work with the tribe and the districts to maybe set up, um, you know, sessions for each district or, you know, however that would look in a structured manner, at least for this summer. And then also we have some maintenance type things, our, um, sand filter needed to be replaced. So we're working on different things like that.
I would also just reiterate with the importance of swimming lessons. I worked there for eight years, I understand the importance of it. I'm a strong supporter of having good swimmers in our area. Um, my also, my other concern is more on a economic basis is that if we start having families leave our, our city to take swimming lessons in other locations, we are losing economic dollars. Because I know as a mom, if I have to transport my kids to another town, guess what I'm going to do while I'm there? I'm going to go grocery shopping and I'm going to go to the dollar store and I'm going to go run my errands while I'm in that town versus spending my money here. And I think it's another convenience for parents to have. The way we have things kind of looking right now is parents might be able to take their kids over the lunch hour and in evening swimming lessons because there won't be open swim. So I think that would be a very convenient thing for our, our town to continue to have.
Well, I really appreciate your being here and the concerns you have for the pool. Um, this topic did come up at a previous meeting and, you know, the city had made a decision at that time, you know, due to pending litigation against the city directly because of the donation that it made or has made over the years, we're, we're also involved in the lawsuit. So we've had to ask ourselves a very difficult question. You know, why should we continue to donate when it results in us being drug into a lawsuit and being sued? So, you know, this lawsuit is pending. We don't know what the outcome is going to be, you know, with this. And I, we don't know how long it's going to drag out. So, you know, that's what we're faced with, and it's a very unfortunate thing, you know, for the kids in our community. It's unfortunate for, you know, the people that are involved in the lawsuit. So it's not a, not a good situation all around, but that's what we're faced with. So, you know, there's nothing to say, you know, that you can't continue a fundraising effort, you know, through some other sources. I would be personally willing to donate to that if you, if you had a fundraising campaign, as with potentially other people within the community to try to accomplish. But unfortunately, the city's in a situation where our attorney that's representing us is recommending that we don't continue with our donations until we know what the result of the lawsuit is going to be. And I'll let the rest of the council, you know, comment as they wish.
I know that we need the swimming pool. I know that my kid, you know, loved coming up there to swim and he went to swimming lessons there. I feel that if our attorney is advising us to not donate pending litigation, I think as a council we have to.
I want to make one clarification there, that I'm not the attorney that they're speaking about.
I feel the same way as the mayor feels about it, that's my personal opinion.
Have you guys thought about doing a fundraising? We could set something up that I'll spend discuss.
My comments also are that I believe that your involvement in community development in this, um, in utilization of our swimming pools are really very important. And I think it actually gets back to what we as citizens think we're doing, and that's citizen involvement in whole community. I personally also will be champion of your efforts to raise funds. It does sound like the mayor stated, and it comes to people at the city, we just can't do it. But I would personally glad to donate and support the others.
Doctor Stott?
I think the main situation the pool association is in is that we will have pool open, um, with lawsuit. But it would be helpful, yeah, on your desk, coming up, while the pool is open, and other things happen, perhaps with the lawsuit, that is being reconsidered.
I didn't hear the last comment.
No, other things happen with the lawsuit, they, they change the situation. But the pool is planning to proceed with lessons because it's a more controlled environment. And the school district, um, uses this disclaimer for all of its activities. And we feel that we have reasonable basis to proceed with that.
Other comments by anyone involved in this? Thank you for being here and taking your initiative. Thank you very much. Okay, I think it's been mentioned at a previous meeting, you know, we're exploring the idea of potentially. Okay, I think it's been mentioned at a previous meeting, you know, we're exploring the idea of potentially, yes?
I had somebody mention on Facebook, are you guys aware of the coyote problem numbers we're starting to have?
The what problem?
Coyote, the coyote numbers of the animals. They say they see them in town, on the east side of town.
Oh, we're not aware of that.
And I know one, one, last Friday night here, I could hear them at my house just loud as could be. Must be a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't had it, I haven't, do we have any sightings in town?
Not that I know of.
Have any pets disappeared? Have any pets disappeared that you're aware of?
Does the game word know about it?
I don't, I didn't ask the person, but I will ask them. They say.
I'd say, you know, our police chief could reach out to the game fishing park spokes and say that, you know, we've heard them around town and I guess law enforcement and the game fishing parks folks keep an eye out.
One on the east side of my house, I could hear them up in the hills of that field area though.
I know they got over the old lagoons. I know that for a fact. And the old lagoons where Dyche's bastion stuff are. I've seen them down in there. That's what you're hearing. I can hear them in shock too. I've never seen one. Somebody said they seen one one day across the road. I haven't seen one.
Okay. All right, well, keep an eye out for coyotes then. South Dakota Code Enforcement Training is in Fort Pierce on May 12th and 13th. I believe we have a couple council people that are interested in attending. I think Councilwoman Apple, Councilwoman Just are both interested in attending. It's got a good agenda there because it relates to some of the things we've talked about before. Potentially, you know, contracting with a code enforcement officer, you know, enacting. So it'd be good to get some direct input, you know, some of our council people that they can bring back as we go forward and potentially slowly, you know, seeing whether or not we want to enact code enforcement officer and the related changes potentially in our offices. So thank you for being willing to attend that. So we'll need to authorize their expenses for travel. So I'll entertain a motion for that. Motion by German, seconded by Silver. Discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Close, motion carries. Next item is the appointments for the new council. I guess for anybody that feels they can't serve in their appointment as far as the council is concerned or any reason you've got any issues with any of that, now would be the time to make any changes. And I guess all of the appointments would cover both the council and the volunteer boards, you know, as well as, you know, our city employees here. So the motion to approve the appointments would be everything that's listed on the appointment sheet, May 10th, 2021, that's in your pack. Any questions about any of the appointments? Is there a motion to approve?
Also moved.
Motion by Randolph, seconded by Stapleton. Discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Close, motion carries. We approve the fee structures for every year. Do we have any changes to note in the fee structures at all, Amber?
I think we just, I just had to do an increase on the water meters. The residential meters went up a little bit. And I think maybe the stubs went up a little bit too. That's the only thing that changed on the first page.
That was due to some material costs.
Right, right. The cost to the city, right. And then on the second page for the rental of equipment, we added the pickup to the trucks. Because sometimes we use pickups when we have to do some cleanup to properties. So we needed to have a rental fee for that.
How much is the pickup rental fee?
I, I just added it to trucks. So it says regular or pickup, seventy, seventy, yeah, yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding the fees? I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fees for 2021. By German, is there a second? Apple, discussion. All in favor, aye. Close, motion carries. We also approve, I think for insurance purposes mainly, our fire department and city recreational employees. And I guess all of the pay rates are listed for all the part-time employees for summer rec are listed in that as well as the fire department members. That would be included all in the same motion. So is there a motion to approve the appointment of the fire department members for 2021 and also all of our summary help for summer rec? Motion by German, is there a second? Apple, discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Close, motion carries. After one year absence due to COVID, the Lake Area Cruisers Car Show is going to take place June 5th. Erin Cameron submitted this application for a special event. Do you have any comments?
It's, however, many of you have been put in a past, we, we are going to basically limit it to just the show and think Kwanis is going to be there to sell food and that sort of thing. We'll encourage people to wear face masks if they're in large groups, social distance. I did talk to Meyer and in the past, we had those older bleachers that he would set up in front of Wells Fargo. But then I think they got replaced with newer ones. And then the city decided they weren't going to let people use them if they were following them. My question is if Meyer puts those out for us and takes them back, can they be used? As long as we're not moving them around?
I, I thought they had been used.
Okay, I couldn't remember. I couldn't remember. And when we talked, Meyer and Trent remember either.
I don't know that anybody has an issue with that. I mean, that's why we got portable bleachers so they could be moved around.
I just, I remember we let somebody use them and they were damaged and I was like, I don't know if we can use them now.
If it's a community-wide event, that brings people in the community, we've done that in the past. The bleachers are a lot more portable now than they used to be, so.
Okay, then we would like those there in front of Wells Fargo for awards again. Do you have any questions? Go ahead. I do need to get Amber a copy of our deck sheet. We did get that back.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Lake Area Cruisers special event permit for June 5th car show in Sistin?
Also moved.
Motion by Stapleton, seconded by Apple. Discussion. All in favor, aye. Close, motion carries. The Citizen Ministerial Association has applied for a vacation Bible school in June 16th at Anderson Park. Okay, the application was in your packets. I don't recall. Has this been done in the past?
No, this is a, this is a new event.
New item. Well, I guess the application looks complete. Does anybody have any questions? I don't know that we've got a representative here this evening, but I think it's kind of self-explanatory. It's going to start pretty early in the morning.
Nope, it's just a one evening event. So it's from 5:30 to 8:15.
That's right.
Yeah.
One evening, okay. Any questions? Promotion for action on the permit approved? Motion by Just, seconded by Apple. Discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Close, motion carries. Every year, money is available from the South Dakota Department of Health to apply for a West Nile Prevention Grant to provide some money for us to do some mosquito control, that type of thing. And we do that every year and I think it's a matter of getting it submitted and we get a few thousand dollars, I think, every year to help with mosquito control. So is there a motion authorizing that application? By Randolph, is there a second? By Apple, discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Close, motion carries. The next item is kind of a housekeeping thing that we do every year. It's a resolution to adopt a cafeteria plan. I'll turn it over to Amber to explain that to the council and why it's needed.
Yes, this just allows our employees, if they have any health plan that they are responsible for apart or all of the premium, to do it on a pre-tax basis. So there are certain requirements that you have to meet with the IRS to be able to offer this kind of plan. And, and, you know, passing the resolution is a part of that, so.
Any questions? Is there a motion then to adopt Resolution 2021-1? Motion by Silver, is there a second? By Stapleton, discussion. All in favor of the motion, aye. Close, motion carries. I did pass over the 2020 annual report as an agenda item. Amber, do you have any comments regarding the 2020 annual report?
I just wanted to go over a couple of things. If you go to page five of the report, exhibit four, it shows revenues. It starts with the revenues and then goes down expenditures for the general fund. I just wanted to point out a couple of things, I guess. And I, I had kind of discussed this at an earlier meeting about the comparison of 2019 to 2020. Our general sales tax was down a little bit in 2020, about, about $8,000. When you look at our total revenue and expenditures comparing 19 to 20, was significantly higher, but it was due to a project at the airport. We got, we got a large amount of federal grants. You can see this year, or in 2020, we had almost 2.8 million in federal grants where prior, the prior year, we only had 173,000. So that was the big, big difference in revenue from 2019 to 2020. And then the same thing with expenses. So our capital outlay this year, we had 3.1 million and the previous year was 813. If you look at the total, or I'm sorry, the excess, the excess of revenue over expenditures, it's on that second page. It shows 733,458 is excess revenue. We had more revenue in that amount compared to our expenditures. And the previous year in 2019, we had about 602,0454. So our excess was up by over 130,000. So that's a good thing. And then if you continue on to page nine, exhibit six, it shows our enterprise funds. So it, on the top of the page, it lists the liquor, water, sewer, and garbage funds. I just did a little comparison of where it shows about halfway down the page. It first lists your operating revenue and then your operating expenses and then it shows operating income or loss. So for the liquor fund in 2019, our operating income was 145,000 and in 2020, it was 154. For our water fund in 19, it was 157,000 and in 2020, it was 138. So that was a little bit less in comparison. Sewer fund in 19, it was 153,000 and then in 2020, 160. So that was a little bit higher in 2020. And then actually in the garbage fund, there was a loss in 2019 of almost 15,000. And the reason for that is because in 20, in 2019, I believe there was a garbage truck that was fully depreciated. So our depreciation expense was quite a bit lower now in 2020. So you'll see that there is an operating income in 2020 of 8,500. So those were just some of the highlights, I guess, that I wanted to point out. Unless anyone has any questions about anything.
Questions regarding the annual report? In general, when we put together our budgets, we've been kind of conservative on the revenue side and likewise on the expense side. As a general rule, over the years, our income has probably come in a little higher than what we budgeted and our expenses overall tend to come in a little lower than expected. And over the course of a number of years, you know, we have been accumulating some cash balance in our general fund. And that's why when we talk about replacing water treatment plant and that type of thing, we do have some funds available from that resource, you know, to take, take a look at some of those types of things. So, but as we all know and looking at some major infrastructure projects, a million dollars doesn't go very far. And the way things are going right now with building costs and material costs, unless things settle down, you know, that number could get pretty scary, you know, going forward here. So we'll just have to see how the year progresses. Okay, I think action is necessary from the council to approve the 2020 annual report. So if there aren't any other further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Silver, seconded by Randolph. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, aye. Close, motion carries. We do have a need to go into executive session to discuss personnel and a legal matter. So I'll entertain a motion at this time to do that and then we'll reconvene after executive session. So is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Apple, seconded by Silver. Discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Close, motion carries. We're in executive session. We'll hold until I get the green light. We're in executive session, we'll hold until I get the green light that...